We're going to meet the city council, City of Southfield. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bruce, Patassos, Fraser, Moore, here. Taylor, Amanda Vaughn.
He's here.
Wrightwell?
Here.
Mr. President, you have a call on the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone.
Okay. All right. The first item is the, uh, is Mr. Vaughn going to address that Neighborhood Enterprise Zone?
How many is here?
Well, okay, let's, before then, let me do a house component item. Uh, Mr. Fraser has an item that I'm going to put at between four and five. For that item, become number four A, would be the recognition of the Martin team, uh, at depth by the, uh, Neighborhood Task Force.
For somebody to make some presentation, I'd do it now. Or if you want to wait, that's one of you.
Is there anyone here on the, we have no patient?
The road project, yes.
Yeah, just, let's just go ahead and get hold of us. Go ahead, number two. Yeah.
Mr. President, thanks for having me here tonight. Uh, I've got an item that's going to appear, if there's consensus here in the study session portion, it'll appear on the consent agenda. And this is approval of the agreement for the rehabilitation of the North, all Northwestern Highway Service Drive from Southfield Road to Lasser Road. We've got our MDOT off-sharing agreement.
I can't, I can't.
So the limits of this project are from Southfield Road, pretty much right where Southfield Freeway ends and Southfield Road begins, and comes all the way up to Lasser Road. We stopped just short of the intersection, some pavement work that the Road Commission had completed last year. So the project is primarily concrete patching of the existing concrete pavement and will have four inches of an asphalt overlay. We've got reconstruction of some of the intersections in particular that are in rough shape, so at Mount Vernon and at Evergreen. And then there's a segment on the service drive just north of Civic Center Drive, about 650 feet of a segment that's going to be totally reconstructed. These reconstructed segments will be in concrete. We do have a little bit also, can we go back here? Just east of the freeway on Civic Center, there's a portion, before you hit our asphalt project that we did about five years ago, we're going to be doing some concrete patches on Civic Center there. And also near Civic Center on the Southbound Service Drive, we're going to do a couple of concrete patches close to the intersection there. We are overmatched on this project and MDOT was agreeable to having us expand a little bit outside the limits of just that Northbound Service Drive portion. And then we get good economy of scale prices to do the patching of this project here. We've got an investment in new traffic signals at Mount Vernon Intersection, at Evergreen, and at Civic Center Drive. Evergreen will include masters, and those are the steel posts, painted gray, similar to the other masters you see on the Evergreen Corridor in our City Center area here. We've got a bit of a lane reduction between Mount Vernon and Civic Center Drive. It's currently a three-lane cross-section on that service drive. We're taking away one of the lanes and we'll be striking an on-street bike lane along that stretch. Uh, there's sidewalk and driveway improvements. Driveway improvements are really because we're bringing the road up four inches. A lot of the driver approaches we need to replace either fully or at least go back far enough so that we can make the grade smooth out appropriately. I'll get into some more detail of where the sidewalk improvements are on slides in just a minute here. Uh, the service drive remains open to traffic during this whole project, so either one or two lanes will be open. So if it gets a little backed up, of course, during rush hour times, but cars will still be able to make their way along the corridor to get in and out of our City Center Districts here. Funding, overall, this is about a $7.6 million project if you include 10% contingencies and 15% or construction engineering. $1.74 million is federal funding that we've secured. And then the city's road fund, construction fund pays for the lion's share at $5.84 million. The City Center Advisory Board has approved in their budget to contribute $50,000, and that's really towards some of the non-motorized sidewalks improvements that we're completing. So these are some of the sidewalk areas here at Mount Vernon. There's really a lack of accessible ADA compliant crossings across the freeway, so we've got a few areas that we're making some improvements. So Mount Vernon, we've got this little陡 path here where there's no sidewalk and it's just grass right up to the back of the curb, so we're putting a little bit of sidewalk here and then improving the ADA ramps so that people, at least on one side of this bridge, can get all the way across the freeway here. There's more significant improvement going on at the 10-mile corridor. This corridor sees a lot more pedestrians because you have LTU just to the west over here, right off the edge of that map. So we're going to be completing the sidewalk on the north side of this 10-mile bridge. And then we've got sidewalk gap, really, this is curvy right here. So on the 10-mile side and on the service drive side, there's no sidewalk currently, and we're going to add sidewalk here so that, that connectivity that we're looking for for our Evergreen Corridor, and then we're going to continue that up the service drive. There's a pretty large sidewalk gap here, this is the McAvie's Center Building. So right about Town Center, they've got sidewalk in front of their property, and then there's this big gap. So this is a portion that we're completing with a five-foot concrete sidewalk here. And then further up closer to Lasser Road, there is sidewalk along this stretch right at the back of curb. This is an area that we're taking one of the lanes away when you get up to Lasser. This gives us a little bit more room. We're going to extend a 10-foot asphalt path from Lasser down to where the City Center project, there are 10-foot asphalt paths stopped just here, a little south of Corporate Drive. We're going to continue that up to Lasser Road there. Uh, the one closure that we will have will be the bridge, the Mount Vernon Bridge that crosses here. So during the first phase of construction, that first phase of construction is three months long. I'm hoping this closure doesn't actually last three months. We're going to try and limit the amount that they have to do this bridge work. But with this closed, this is the connector, if you're traveling south on Southfield Road, typically for people to get to Nine Mile, they're taking this Mount Vernon to the Southbound Service Drive to get to Nine Mile. So we're going to have some detour signage up at 10 Mile to direct people all the way over to Evergreen and down to Nine Mile. Around then, the people that want to go eastbound, they'll be directed down to Nine Mile and then back up to get onto Southfield Road there. The needs and wants of it, anyone having questions?
Mr. Mayor?
When is that going to start?
Uh, this should be starting in early May.
And, um, we have terrible traffic from places like that. They are backed up all the way to Southfield Road and Mount Vernon all the way to, um, northwestern highway. So I don't know if we've reached, uh, reached out to schools, but...
No, not directly, but I'm glad to throw that up. Hope you can do that.
It is a master.
Yeah, we will do a direct mailer and invite people to a public meeting. Oftentimes, our mailer doesn't extend that far out, but I'll make sure that one goes to the page.
Yeah, most of the trips are given to schools, and the afternoons and mornings are a master. And at 30, I thought of doing, going nitt a little bit on Mount Vernon, but cement's really good between block and circle and, uh...
Not with this project. We've got a lot of rough pavement on Mount Vernon, actually, that whole stretch. So, um, that is on our radar for future improvement projects.
Thank you. Mr. Mudd? Um, you mentioned that there's going to be, um, concrete patching when you have previous to the asphalt project? Why would you...
Um, the concrete patching is actually, it's in an area that is concrete. So when we redid Civic Center Drive from Evergreen, we stopped probably about 150, 200 feet short of Northwestern because there was already a pavement change there. So where our asphalt overlay ends, there's some concrete there. We did some concrete patching five or six years ago when we did Civic Center, when we did the asphalt portion, but now some new areas have kind of opened up that need some attention. So it's just in the existing concrete area on Civic Center that we're going to do some concrete patches.
And then, how many people detour when the bridge is closed? Having them detoured down 10 Mile and Evergreen. 10 Miles already pretty rough. Have we reached out to the county to see if they have any plans for that stretch of the 10 Mile?
The county is very familiar that 10 Mile is on an important priority list within Southfield for Road Commission Road. They've not identified a funding year for that 10 Mile stretch yet. It's really the whole two miles, I mean, I think all the way to Evergreen. You know, you've got some nice, smooth segments, short here and there, but mostly lots of joint deterioration.
So there's, there's no plans?
Not this year, no.
Okay.
Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, actually, 10 Mile Road is probably not back on their list of roads to fix again because it hadn't been that long since they put in the bad road. And it goes, actually, it goes all the way to, um, Burr Road. It goes all the way from Greenfield all the way down to Burr Road because that's where they stopped. And, uh, it's a rough road the whole way through.
Yeah, they had done an overlay project not that many years back, but that was from Evergreen to Lasser. But the piece, east of Evergreen, it's been a lot of years since they repaved that piece of road.
Well, they rebuilt the corner in Southfield and 10 Mile.
They did some intersection work.
That was terrible. The bridge, uh, near the city center that you're going to add some sidewalk to, is that the same area that a resident sent an appeal to us probably five, six months ago that said that the, the banister of the bridge, of the bridge above, I think, didn't go far enough that you could actually walk across and, and trip and fall down on a expressway?
I did not hear that. Typically, those type of complaints, the bridge itself is owned by MDOT. So those complaints are forwarded to MDOT for action. But right now, there's not, I mean, there's, in the middle of the bridge, there is an adjacent, you could say, sidewalk, but then there's grass on either end and no sidewalk ramps. So, I mean, there's not really any compliant pedestrian crossing there currently.
Oh, yeah? Apparently, you just walk in there with...
I mean, people will make, make their way, able-bodied people, you know, will step through the grassed areas and up and over the curbs, but when we're done, we'll have ADA ramps. And, yeah, we'll take a look at that to see if that's something that needs to be addressed before we start putting in...
Okay, and the, uh, the other question, where you're going to raise the road up about four inches, so you're going to have to put new driveway extensions in? Are you going to make sure that they're smooth, it's a smooth transition from the road to the driveway? Or is it going to be a hump, like a half a curb, um, to get out of their driveway or raise the road up?
No, in most instances, we're actually removing their entire driver approach and repaving it. And in some areas where there isn't much right-of-way, we need to come back onto private property, and we needed to get some temporary grading easement from the private property owners so we can make this smooth transition. So we did mailers for that probably almost a year ago now. So we've included the full replacement for, for all of the ones that we could. There could be some asphalt wedging going on if we can't get a hold of the property owners. Asphalt wedging, basically, just to complete the transition, but it's not the ideal way that we'd like to see it done, so...
Um, the three that I ask is, our daughter's down there, and I were living in subdivision, new subdivision, and when they paved it, they made the driveway approach, it's almost like a half a curb. So when you're driving in the driveway off the street, you go over a bump to get into the driveway. But, and I don't understand why they did it that way because the driveway slopes, so it's not like they're trying to protect their lawn from, and they have curbs.
Well, sometimes, I think, I've seen curbs, like, we call that a curb drop where that driveway is.
Yeah.
And there's a tolerance for what's an acceptable curb drop.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes, in my opinion, that drop is not enough, but that's something we'll be keeping an eye on so that we don't have that issue.
Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Okay. If there's no other questions, this one will run the council, I mean, consent agenda?
Thank you.
You revert that guy, number eight, for the neighborhood enterprise zone. Uh, this evening, during the consent portion of your agenda, we're asking City Council to establish the date of May 21st to conduct a public hearing as required pursuant to the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone legislation, Public Act 147 of 1992. You recall February 12th, uh, of 2016, this was presented to the Neighborhood Services Committee, came to City Council February 26th of 2016, um, to establish the districts, and we have identified back in both February and continue, basically, four areas, Section 34, 35. Section 34 is Zone 1, Section 35 is Zone 2, and then the northeast corner, Zone 3 is Cotelpa, Greenfield, four blocks west, up to 12 Mile. Zone 4 is 12 to 13 Mile, four eastern lead blocks. It's consistent with what we've presented with council before. Upon review of the zones, it was recommended by Miller Camfield that we, that we break that into the four zones because of right-of-ways. There's some unique language in the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone that speaks to condemnation, although we've done, not done any condemnation nor do we continue to. That was the driver for creating the four zones. You don't know what happens in the right-of-way. The zone consists of only, the zones consist of only residentially zoned properties. May 21st, we'll conduct a public hearing, also at May 21st as required by statute. We will introduce, the city attorney will introduce an ordinance amending, um, our zoning ordinance to require then any home that is subject to the Neighborhood Enterprise Tax Certificate, which is a reduction in the property taxes, that the home have a certificate, a inspection, and certifying that the home has a certificate of compliance, meaning that it needs codes. If you recall, to be eligible, a property must have a true cash value less than $80,000. The areas we're looking at are really the few areas of the city that you'll find a few parcels that are below $80,000. So primary objective tonight is to establish the public hearing date of May 21st, as required pursuant to the Public Act 147. The city clerk will be sending out a public notice and advertising this, or just between April 30th and April 5th. During the, the May 21st meeting, we'll do a formal presentation for the viewing audience as well. We're in the process of finalizing policies. I did include in your handout, Grand Rapids, which a lot of times analyzing would put both Grand Rapids and Lansing to, and we're nearing completion of a policy document as well, which will also be presented on May 21st. Council, Mr. Patassos?
Fred, uh, the first pair of that background, where it says the value there is $80,000 per housing unit, then it says, um, that his zone must consist of 10 continuous parcels. What do they mean by continuous parcels? It can't be, it can't be 10 houses in a row, can it?
Well, if you'll see, we have multiple parcels in here, uh, the sections. So it is individual lots, home lots, zone. So it must be a minimum of...
Well, if it's a nice house in the, I mean, if it's, if, how does it meet the criteria if, if there's five houses, for example, five parcels that are...
Well, it's the actual zone.
The zone itself?
The zone itself. The certificate is granted on an individual basis. It's an excellent question. That is...
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Um, Fred, the program also allows for new construction. Do we know how many vacant lots are...
We are assessing that. Actually, the mayor, I know, did some footwork this weekend.
And it was on...
What, at 34? No, 35. No, 34.
30, that's what I think. Please, number 14?
Um, the lower half of Evergreen, the west streets.
But there's, so there's no cap on the new construction, right?
No. You can do new cap, 15-year abatements, uh, the abatement goes the first 12 years and then steps down in an acre in the last three years.
And it's on materials only, not labor? Because you, people can cheat on labor, you know, things that cost us...
What's interesting, uh, you're going to see in Section 34 and 35, as is the May 21st presentation, that we have, have pushed the square foot values up substantially in the last two years. And I could show you where we've had NRI homes that have pushed the comps up to $80. So you've got a large spread between the existing homes and your new homes. I think there's quite a few, there's, you're now creating an opportunity for some infill development as well, and this type of incentive may push that in the, in the right direction.
Yeah, at the upcoming Neighborhood Services meeting, I just want to make sure we kind of touch on that and maybe have a little bit more idea of finality, especially as we look towards another block or block on that. Thank you.
That would be a good idea to do. I would also add that just in doing, um, an analysis from pre-current mortgage crisis, post-mortgage crisis, and now, HUD in particular was giving away homes on Lower Evergreen for $4,500. One house, $500. $9,000, $10,000, $12,000, just really selling us short on property values. They were, in other words, they were dumping property, along with Deutsche Bank, US Bank, and some mortgage companies. Now seeing the prices, a house just sold, a house of grand, very modest house, in January, and we're seeing other significant increases in property value, in the top of the sales in that area.
Is that it, Mr. Vaughn? Mr. Fraser?
Yeah. Mr. Vaughn? Do these houses, after they finish their upgrades, do they get reassessed?
They'll be, they'll be reassessed, but the mortgage rate will be reduced to basically half of the same average, which is right now about 18 and, well, the most recent number. So there's, there's a substantial savings on the mortgage rate.
And for how long is that?
It goes 12 years at 100%, then it starts dropping down those last three years. It's leaving, it's 75, 50, then 25 that last year. So it begins to bring the mortgage back up.
Okay. So in effect, it's not on cap?
No. Assessed, it's not a cap, but that's one of where the homes will be advantaged, if the same owner has been in the home, they'll have some of that capped value from proposal A.
Okay. Uh, just a feature information when you talk about HUD dumping houses, there's a woman that works at the rehab center where my wife lives, and I was talking to her the other day. She lives down there five miles, not in Southfield, but in another community. And she and her husband bought a house right after the mortgage collapsed. It has eight bedrooms and five bathrooms for $110,000. And, and there's only two of them in the house. Because you don't turn it to a bed and breakfast or something yet. But that's how, that's how much they, you know...
Well, uh, in doing an analysis of this neighborhood, it's 36.6% rental, and a lot of these houses were picked up or nothing. And HUD was supposed to be buying house, you know, taking these houses and giving them as affordable housing to people who are going to live in it. And a whole number of them ended in the hands of flippers, investors, real estate companies.
I'm sorry, I have one more question though, before we...
I'm good.
Is there a cap on the sales price for new construction?
No, they don't cap on the, on the sales price. There's a minimum amount that must be made, but someone comes in to build a new home, you pretty much, you figure they're going to be in, you know, just materials, like $8, $5 a square foot minimum, so, um... Is it Ms. Moore? Uh, Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, just a note, Fred, on page three, under physical impact, I think the last sentence there, you have the administration with development in application fee. I think you meant to say will develop an application?
Yes.
You might, just a note.
Any other?
No, thank you.
Say no one else. This will move on to the consent agenda. Item number three, proposed sale of real property.
The parcel we're discussing is on Lower Lane, it's actually shown on your agenda item. The city has owned it quite a bit, had a virgin process. We owned it since 2010, it's been off the tax rolls. When we acquired it, it cost us $27,000 to tear it down. We had a gentleman from Redford Township approach the city, and they purchased it, offered to purchase it, starting quite a bit lower and finally just came down to, but here's what the assessor says the true cash value is. If you want to offer that, fine, if not, we opened up to everyone, and he decided that he wanted to offer true cash value for the property. The parcel was about the same size as the other ones in the neighborhood. The, um, one thing that will be included in the purchase agreement is that if he does not build a home within four years, he will be liable to the city for the property taxes we would have collected on a home for 10 years. So this encourages us to actually build a home. They'll also be required to connect to our water and sewer, learn that one. So one other thing, it's just a minor point, but actually, one of his personal friends is adjacent to him, and, you know, one of the problems about selling a lot is that people want those empty lots to remain empty forever, so in this case, at least there's someone in the neighborhood who'll be positive to the sale and maybe even have influence on other neighbors. So it's recommended that we authorize the sale. I just confirmed with him, he definitely does want the lot. He wants to build his home, he wants to live in Southfield.
Okay. Mr. Council, Mr. Mandelbaum?
If, if he doesn't finish building the, the home anytime or decides not to, we are, the toll pay tax is based on a home value of $270,000?
I don't know if it'll be the whole $270,000. I need to work with the city attorney's office on that. Maybe something comes up, about $30,000 would be reasonable. Because I don't know if he's going to build a $270,000 home. I think the idea is to encourage him to do it. I think $30,000 would definitely do that.
Okay. And then, I guess another question is, because I've seen this happen before in the city, is there any possibility of, do we have any protections if he builds a home and then decides that it's now going to be transferred or owned by a nonprofit entity and then goes off the tax rolls?
You don't necessarily have that included, that could be included, protect the city for future. That's a good point.
Okay.
Since where they... Since we're the sellers, we can improve that.
I just wanted to see the city get... For our pass on the pass. Thank you.
Saying no other questions, this item will also move on to the consent agenda. Item number four, the renewal of ATT Centrex line.
Thank you. We're revisiting the, the issue was brought before counsel on October sixteenth. Since October sixteenth, I've been working with ATT. ATT really hasn't been working with me during the contracts. It finally got to the point where I actually had to bring in the city attorney's office. We still may be filing an MTSD complaint on the overcharge for long distance. But we finally, we have signed the long distance contract, and that's in place. Now this is to sign the Centrex. Interestingly, I brought you a two-year contract last time because that was all ATT said we could have. Now they're offering us a two-year and a three-year. The three-year is considerably cheaper, so I'm recommending we go with that. That means the long distance and the Centrex will be out of sync. That could be a problem, but I don't think it will because we're only required to keep seven lines total for Centrex. And since I've been before you last, I've already identified three more for removal, and we're just gonna keep picking these off. So it's unfortunate that ATT was so hard to deal with. It's funny, with an organization, you can't tell if it's incompetence or intent. For instance, they overcharged us for long distance. But all this time we've been waiting to sign the Centrex contract, they've been undercharging us. They've been charging us the MyDeal rate, which has been gone for two years. So it's, it's really hard to tell what they, if they mean to do what they're doing or they're just not very good at what they're doing. I don't know.
It's just funny, the devil...
No, to us, it really doesn't matter. But we wanna get it done.
How can you write the hell out of the Fraser line?
That's right. They found their footing though.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
Looking at the, the appendix A, do, as we find lines that can be disconnected and won't be charged, is this saying that if we're under a certain amount of lines, the amount per line goes up?
If we go under seven?
Only under seven?
Yes.
So then the, the second line where it says, one to twenty-five lines, Area A, is ten quarter of that, if you have twenty-six to two-hundred, it's six-sixty, that doesn't mean anything? Or am I missing something?
Oh, will the line, the cost per line go up? Will it get down to twenty-five?
Yeah.
That, from the looks of it, that is possible. I'll have to check on that to make certain, but by then we'd have it pretty low, so we'd still be saving money. But yes, that's possible.
And then, I'm assuming that the, the excess charge also would go down as we got rid of lines as well? Because we're, right now, we're basing it off of seventy lines.
Right. That is a standard charge per line, that would go down.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Saying no, this item will also go on to the consent agenda tonight. And in a quarter with my change in the order, Mr. Fraser has an item that he wishes to input at this time.
Thank you. I got a telephone call from Dorothy Dean, who is acting on behalf of the Martin Luther King Jr. Task Force. And on April the fourth, which is the fiftieth anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr.'s killing, they wanna do a bell ringing on the front steps and wanted to know if it would be okay for them to move the bell out on the, on the front steps and have a little program. They wanna ring the bell thirty-nine times, which is how old he was when he was, when he was killed. So I'm bringing it to the council to see, is it okay for me to call her back and tell her that it's okay to have the bell moved down the front board, on the, on the front steps and, or not?
What time?
Between two and three o'clock in the afternoon. And they wanna get you involved in it too, isn't it? I asked her if they needed the bell and a microphone, and she said yes. So, and, all right, counsel?
Mr. Fraser?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, good.
I have a comment though.
Well, listen.
The, when they get through, I, I would suggest that we get somebody to redo the base. I seen it at Martin Luther King Day, that it had pretty well beat up bases, and I think there's somebody, you know, moving around, here and there. It wasn't meant to, he moved at the bottom of it pretty, pretty rough.
Okay.
So, that maybe that we could get some money and fix it. So, so I'll...
Yeah, sure. I mean, that's an advertisement for the city. You know, somebody comes in, sees a rickety base, and, you know...
Well, it's, you know, bad. If you look at it, most people put wet things on it, and the marks, and, I don't know, it's just, a long time, moving around and, and, you know, it's just wood, and it's messed up a bit. I don't even know how they move it.
Uh, who controls that? Is that park and rec or...
Martin Pilates.
Probably facilities, but we will figure it out. We will get it restored and cleaned up.
It should be much, you know, it's just a base, it's all wood. It's staying on it.
Who moves it down the front porch, on the front steps? Facilities? Facilities moves it on the front steps?
Well, it could, it could be both facilities, outdoor parks and rec.
No, no, right over there.
I, I wrote it down.
Or even, you know, I, I mean, it could also be community relations.
April the fourth. Who moves it to MLK Day?
I believe so.
What time is MLK?
Between two and three in the morning.
I'll check with Jonathan, but I think facilities moves it, although we'll, we'll follow up on it. That was between two and three o'clock?
Yes. Mr. Cruz?
I just wondered if this is something that we could put on our website, on our calendar, so like somebody else can, it could know about it, it's kinda late, so, you know, it'd be nice to have it posted wherever possible, to get more people there.
Sure. He can still get it on the website, yeah. If we, if we get a message to our webmaster, Michael, then he can put it up immediately, I think. She told me that Mary Vitellik was writing a press release, and she was waiting to find out if we had approved, they got approved. Thank you. All righty, that was approved. Now we move to the original item number five. This was the continuation of the apartment inspection ordinance discussion. That, that item is currently on the consent agenda for the night, and out of fairness, I did, oh, meeting with the Apartment Association of Michigan members last Tuesday, the twentieth. And it was Mr., our city attorney, four representatives from the Apartment Association of Michigan, and, and our building staff, the whole building staff was there. So we, we did discuss the, the ordinance, and I received, I think all of us received a letter dated the twenty-third from the Apartment Ordinance Association. Are there any questions from the council relative to the content of the letter? Okay. All right. Seeing on this item...
We didn't discuss the ordinance or...
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Talking about the letter. You're talking about the letter, you're talking about...
The ordinance.
The ordinance. I've got a lot of comments on the ordinance.
Okay.
Number one, let me clarify that, I discussed it before, I said that, this is not the first time we've had a go-round with the ordinance. I guess I was brought to the, the owners and the, I guess, the state board, whatever it is, sometime, and we said, well, we'll see how, how it's handled, and we put it off. And then, of course, the, lately, the North Tower, the people came in and, and discussion was, was taking place, and, and we heard what was wrong with that facility, Sapphire, and, and, and we then decided that we're gonna look at that and deal with that one. And my real concern is, is not the ordinance. My concern is that we're, we're embarking on something that we aren't ready to embark on. And, and the reason I say that is, is because Mr. Pilates talked about three people being added, and I talked to some of the, the other cities, and a lot of cities are having a problem getting any of the people to do inspections and, and training, and I guess I'm talking about, with all the, all the apartments we have in the city, there are quite a number more than these other communities are dealing with. And to do something without being able to handle it properly and professionally, I think, I think we should postpone it until we get the operation cred and, and organize how we're gonna deal with it. There are, you know, the atrium, we had a problem with that, with, with the elevators to, to work, and, and it seemed like it was forever before everybody, it was always somebody else's job to inspect it, somebody else's job to get it fixed. There was a great amount of delay in, in dealing with that. And, and I'm just concerned with all the facilities that we have presently, or, with models in the city, that, that it's one thing to, to have everybody register and pay a fee, but I'm just wondering, when they register, who's going to do the inspections in a timely manner and, and deal with the paperwork? Because it's, for example, there's, there's provisions in here that, that really, they can come back and re-inspect and see whether there's compliance or not. The compliance shall be valid for only one year. So that means that some cases every year are gonna have to come back and, and to check them out, and somebody's gonna have to inspect them. It's, like I said, it's, it's a good ordinance, but I, I just think that I haven't really been sold on the fact that, yeah, we're ready to handle this with three new people. I think that the people who are gonna be hired are just gonna need some training. They are going to, I don't know if they're gonna deal with the worst ones first, the ones that are complaining with. I mean, we have a lot of good, of all the owners in the city, that have no problems with it, and the people are happy. You know, not picking on anybody, but, you know, we have a lot of construction going on with, with concrete, and we keep saying we got the most construction going on, anybody in the state, and yet we have roadways that have been done in not even a year, like, yeah, the week, eleven and twelve, that already cracked. I'm concerned about spending all that money and getting a load that has cracked it already. In other words, the supervision, and it's not Lee Schultz's job for these inspections, I mean, but, but making sure that the base is proper before they put the asphalt down, those kinds of things. And we spend, we've got ninety-nine million dollars of people's money, holding a bond, that we're spending to, to build roads in the city, and I don't think we're getting our money's worth. And I think a lot of it is, is that we don't, you know, we don't have enough people to expand the roads that we have. We just had the zone on earlier, the first one, and, and an identified zone, that takes time, effort, managing, and we keep taking things out. We're gonna have another big construction season this year. And what I, I guess I'm saying is, I don't think, I think we got to take our time and do it right. I really don't think that we are ready for it. We probably turn back maybe twenty permits a week, because I, we don't have that much thing. We have the director that has to go out on inspections now in building. I think, along with our department, our, Mr. Pilate, it, it's just that we're booming as far as construction and, and the, the time to get these things done and to do it adequately, you know, if you get things done and it's done wrong, you know, it makes the city look bad. And I'd rather see things done with, with a proper, uh, uh, operation in place. The other thing is that, yeah, you know, as far as finances, we're taking on a whole new department, so to speak, and, and here we are already over budget with the police department and the entire department. We gotta get that straightened out. I just checked, and our audit isn't even finished yet. And, and these things really bother me. I mean, it's, it's like we're running around, running all in different directions and not getting anything done. This is March, and I didn't have the audit finished, you know, and, and now we're taking on something else again, and, and I think we just got to kinda sit back a minute and, and relook at where we're at, how we're gonna get there, and have a plan. And if the Sapphire is not properly run, we deal with that. If we need an ordinance to straighten them out, or close it down, or get the people out, out of there and, and close the place down, or tear it down, or whatever we're gonna do, we can do that. But putting everybody in the same bushel basket and not being able to, to deal with it properly, I think is totally wrong. And I went through this thing backwards and forward, I had two pages of notes, and I, and I just tried to look at this organization and, and see what we're, we're getting into, and how are you gonna do it? You're the administrator, Fred, and, and, you know, it's, it's on your back, really. And I think that you gotta slow down. I gotta think that we have to slow down and, and do things the right way. I'm not finished yet. I'm really serious about this, Dan. I mean, money is money. Money I work with every day, and I'm saying is, we're spending money like it's, like somebody's making in the basement.
That's right.
Okay?
We're serious about it, that's why we're having this discussion.
Well, I, I'm sorry Sue isn't here. We're here, but, but you know, we are, it's like fourteen thousand units, something like that, and, and all of them are gonna have to be... I mean, I, I got this, little apartments. You know, I'm looking at this, and I'd say, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, you know, nine pages of stuff, that are all gonna be, have to be addressed. And, and I even said to myself, and again, not trying to knock any department, but I'm trying to say, how many, how many fire inspections do we do a day? We have, what, one man, one person to do a fire inspection? Is that what it is? Or none anymore? I don't know, but we're supposed to have fire inspections, and that's done by the fire department. And I'm saying is that that isn't even up to date, you know? I mean, we, we haven't even had fire inspections in all these departments. And, and, you know, I'm saying this because we're in the session, and I think we're supposed to discuss this in still on a city and to run it properly. And I look at all these things, and I started to say, okay, we're gonna pick up now on a, on another item. And don't forget, when, when you pay these fees, you got a letter, I know I got a letter about this lady, and it was a, a, one that was printed by somebody, and everybody's put their name on it, but they raised a... on it, but they raised the prices on water. Everybody get one of those letters? They raised everybody's price. Well, what do you think these owners are going to do? They're going to raise the prices. They're not going to take the money out of their pocket. And so here we're causing now some people who may not be able to afford where they're at, now getting hit with an additional fee. And I don't, I just look at all these situations that can occur, will occur, really, and I say, slow down and let's wait until we have the whole organization set up, people set up, trained properly. So how many can we do a day? How long is it going to take us for 14,000 units? And are we going to do the worst ones first? How are we going to handle it? I just think that that's the way we should run the shop. Those are my comments.
Okay. Mrs. Zone, do you want to address in this or have your staff address? Primarily from a staffing standpoint, we've been discussing this item for quite a while now. We went from A to B on it and that's why.
We had two meetings. I'm going to correct you. We had two meetings, I think I have both.
Well, we discussed them extensively. And that's why it is where it is today because we've had those discussions. And I would have, Mr. Zone, if you want to.
Yeah, if we could have Mr. Pilot and Mr. Regala come up to the podium. You're correct, we have 14,000 units. The first process is inspection. I know that all that Mark and personnel with HR, you were correct with your statement that there is a shortage of building inspectors in southeastern Michigan. But I think this is about the city's response to existing market conditions. You have pretty much every city around us now has an apartment inspection ordinance. This housing stock is 60, you know, the city's 60 years old. Some of this housing stocks, 50, 60 years old, is looking its age. Much of it was owned by a group that had a, build and abandon, build it, depreciate the asset to the fullest, then flip it to the next guy for whatever value they could squeeze out of it with very little capital. I would argue that the amount of time that the department spends in crisis management, well, you were mayor, we spent a better chunk of time in the Providence Place Apartments dealing with the atrium. You're correct. I will state that the building department as a cost center is actually one of the bright spots in the building department, the restructuring the city undertook 30 months ago. And the work that staff put in on fee structure and some of the right sizing, we actually have one entity that is supporting itself as well as its longevity cost and its maximum cost. The, you know, I really think we've got to recognize what's happened. Every city around us, even Troy, now has an inspection ordinance. Ed Mark, if you can speak to the staffing and the prototype for development?
With respect to staffing, we will be hiring two building inspectors within the next two weeks. They've already been vetted. I've chosen those building inspectors. One of the inspectors is a seasoned housing inspector. We will be utilizing him in this fashion. We do have also another housing inspector on staff currently. We will be utilizing him. And then we will go out for solicit for another two housing inspectors to complete this program. But I will have the staff to start the program with the two new hires coming on.
In addition, if I might, one of the gentlemen that is the most senior that is coming on staff is actually from Ann Arbor and was intimately involved in their inspection, rental inspection process. So we may be able to use a little bit of his expertise since he was a major inspector there, so that should be helpful. And again, we have these two people coming in very quickly. We've done a lot, Mark and I and Diane have done a lot to outline our checklists in advance. We have a lot of the information already ready. We've been working on it diligently, checking other communities, seeing what their checklists are like and seeing what information we can get as quick as we can to the apartment owners. We also know there'll be a little bit of that lag time where we'll have, excuse me, where we're going to have the registration process before we get to the inspection process. We've actually gained quite a bit of knowledge from going out to the Sapphire and doing quite a few inspections out there, as well as Providence Place. We've been involved in both of those. So we already have some experience in inspecting apartment complexes from both of those to gain some knowledge. So that was actually very helpful.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Fassi.
When you, small bungalow house, how long does it take you to inspect a home from the ground up?
A rental home.
You got all these? Yeah?
We can get out, in and out of there with a half hour, 40 minutes.
And you have callbacks?
Yes.
And sometimes more than one callback?
On a single-family residence.
Fisher hasn't finished up?
Yes, we have good callbacks.
This guy still has to show up to that appointment?
Yes.
Guy isn't finished, you got to come back?
Yes.
Maybe three, four, five times?
Yeah. That's great. They have to pay an additional fee after the.
The list on HUD houses, you got, you got to have a certain amount of check on every house the HUD has, right?
Well, the HUD, the HUD houses, we wouldn't be inspecting the, that.
Well, I know it says HUD units, multiple, she got.
Right, we would be getting those reports from the REAC inspections. We wouldn't expect those, we would accept those reports.
You think they're inspected on a regular basis?
Pardon me?
The federal housing, you think it's inspected on a regular basis?
They have to.
HUD?
Yes.
Well.
They have a regular program.
They're not in Detroit.
I can't.
And they got a lot of people that's in Detroit that are not inspected. I'm just going by, I mean, I live it every day, you know? And I go through these, I'm meeting with these guys, and I'm just trying to say that that it's heavy work. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of paperwork. How to go back and finish? Sure. And here it says you got, you have to come back. You have to come back, you know, if it's not ready. You have to, sometimes if the person doesn't, isn't home, you know, you have to have a lever so that they can get in, or the owner or the manager has to get in, you know? So that's it, being there and not being able to get in, you got to come back. I'm just, what I'm really trying to say, and I hope you guys understand, that it isn't to go up to one building and you write all the bad things on. It may take you, it may take you all day in some of the big ones, all right? And you write it up and, or you don't write it up, but you have to check them and then you leave. Then you have to come back and make sure that those things are done, all right? If there are a few things that have to get done. So, but it's like, one thing when you got 10 or 12, but when you got 14,000 units, we're talking about, we're talking about running rates off of somebody to get done.
Well, we would be doing 20% of those.
Pardon?
We would only be doing 20% of the 14,000 units per year.
I seen that, yeah.
And then if there are no, if there are no violations or 80% of the units passed, they're good for a period of three years.
There's a lot of people who have multiples in the city that have bought old ones, have been on the block or foreclosed on, like the Sapphire, that are playing games. And I don't know how many times you're going to have to go back to that, you know? I mean, boilers are going and then you got to order them, you got to wait on it, you got to go back and make sure. And I don't know how many times you've been to the Sapphire buildings. I mean, yeah.
20, 30 tanks.
Yeah, there you go. That's one building.
But this is about preventing that too.
Yeah, but.
I'd rather do that in a controlled environment than in a crisis emergency response. I mean, our primary, our primary focus here is about public health and safety.
I understand that, Fred. I wasn't raised yesterday and I wasn't here only yesterday. I know what we've been through with it before. The sad thing was we built 14,000 of them we shouldn't have. Philadelphia Study is a bunch of hash. And we did it and now it's supposed to be the moneymaker throwing money at the city because they're going to take away the old rubbish, the salt snow, the old this, the old that. Now, all of a sudden, it got old and changed the environment and we're stuck with them. And I understand that. But I want, but at the same time, you have to know that these people who live in it, some of them can barely afford to even be in them. And that's why that one letter came. I mean, they're charging for, what, everything in the book? And so what are they going to do with those people now, clear? I just, I just think it isn't against it, it's making sure that we can do the job and do it right.
Ms. Morris, go ahead.
Once the ordinance is passed, how soon do you think you'll be in operation on the program? And then will we get monthly or quarterly reports in terms of the apartments that you visited and the findings?
We could give you monthly reports, that's not an issue. We're looking at starting the registration process and then starting the inspection process within 90 days. It'll take us one year to get through the first portion of them. So it's a one-year process, but we'll start probably 90 days approximately after the registration is completed for each of the apartments.
Mr. Frazier?
Yeah. How long would it take to train a brand-new employee to become an inspector so you have the confidence that you don't, you don't have to go out and hold their hand in order to make sure they do their job right?
For a housing inspector, they don't have to be registered with the state as a building inspector, so there's different qualifications. If someone has some background experience in construction and property maintenance, I think I can get a person well-trained within three months completely.
And if they don't, if they come in, they're, what, 90 years?
I wouldn't hire them. They've got to have some background experience.
Maybe that's why, you know, the whole thing is, I can't hire because you don't have any experience, and I can't get any experience because nobody will hire me.
Right, that's why I've broken down the building inspector's positions into trainees. I have one person that has been a carpenter for quite an extensive period of time. He does know the code. He's going to be in our office for about two or three months, understanding how to do plan review and building inspections. And we will take him out physically and show him all different types of construction. But this is a building inspector. For a housing inspector, those qualifications are much less.
I'm talking about for the apartment, for this ordinance.
For this ordinance.
How long will it take to hire, or not to hire, but to train someone so they're competent and you don't feel like you have to hold their hand or re-inspect, hide them and make sure they got.
From scratch, three months.
Okay. And I want to push back on what Mr. Fassi said a little bit. You know, I think we're in this because about 12, 14 years ago, we started writing an ordinance and we had a couple of city council people that put up the big, oh, no, we can't do that, people can't afford to, this is going to be a terrible event, so we put it on the shelf. Now, now we're trying to fix it again. We just kicked the can down the road. And if we do it again, you know, we may not be sitting at the table, but somebody's going to be sitting at this table and doing the same thing a few years down the road. So at some point in time, we've got to do what we need to do so that we have health and safety and protect our residents so that they have decent quarters to live in and they can have a kind of life that they moved to South Florida and we promise. So. Okay. I think, I see this document as a voice for the tenants. And Mr. Frazier echoes on my thoughts with respect to historical actions. And that's why we're here today and that this document will be a voice for those tenants. I know we have different constituencies and this is one of tenants in the city of South Florida. So if there are no, Mr. go ahead.
Just had a question on two paragraphs. Page eight, section two, you know, talks about providing access to the code. So they have to have either the leases they can do it, you can go in, tenant made a complaint, the tenant gives consent, and then the last is you serve a warrant. If that building really has no issues and the tenant's not making a complaint, would you get to that point of serving a warrant just to fulfill your 20%?
Well, we're going to be using a random number generators to determine 20% of the units. If we can't get into a unit, we're going to move to another unit at that point. I want to reserve that for the most, the worst-case scenario. I don't want to be in court getting warrants. But we will be using a number, a different, a sampling method where we will have a number of units, 20%, plus another percentage of those numbers. And if nobody's available in that unit, we move to the next one.
Okay. And then, page nine, section four, you talk about you're going to have a list of guidelines that you use.
Yes.
Have you started working on that? Do you have something that the council could look at just for reference purposes?
I do, I do.
Okay. And you base that off other areas or just some of the complaints that you've been seeing?
I based that list on the International Property Maintenance Code, which we adopted. And other cities, yes, other cities in the area. But I do have a running list.
But the list ties to the state statute. I just want to comment, you have not had a state, this, the multifamily housing industry has been opposed to this statewide for at least the last six, eight years. And every two years, they make an end run. This, so this ordinance has been written inconsistent to be consistent with the state statute, and it follows the International Construction Code. And there are other areas that they've allowed to do this. I will tell you, I believe we're filed for some type of legal challenge. The last time, it was back in 98, I worked implement one of these and it was successful. Two-year legal challenge, it prevailed. I will tell you, this ordinance, I believe, is for the multifamily with the random 20% and the fee structure is less than what I put in place in 1998, and that prevailed in court.
Okay. One last question. Let's say you're doing your random sampling, you walk into an apartment and you see something, not necessarily that's a building code violation, but something else, something illegal, something that shouldn't be happening in the apartment. Do you then report that to the necessary agency or do you just let that go? So for, I'll give you an example. You know, the police do home inspections for crime prevention, but they won't necessarily report code enforcement violations because they don't want people to be under way from those. So I guess the question is, do you draw the line somewhere or does anything go?
Well, that is a good question. I know for single-family residences, we do rental inspections and we have found in the rental inspection program, unoccupied houses that are marijuana grow facilities. I think that's against the ordinance and we just follow that up with the legal department.
If we open an apartment and find out someone's got a meth lab in there, we're going in illegally. That's a, you know, that's a huge issue and you could destroy that whole building very quickly.
Well, let's say they have more than the amount of people that are supposed to have moving in the apartment. You know, is that something that you would report back or you'd let that go?
That's a tenant marijuana issue.
And also, the manager will likely, a building official will be with you as you're going through these particular properties. Management, you have a management official with that particular building, so that's there. Mr. Cruz?
Yes? I wanted to question, kind of piggyback on Mr. Frazier's questions around the training and stuff, but I was curious as to the two positions that you are hiring for. Were those positions posted on our website? Or how do you go about?
The two, the building inspectors, they were posted.
They were posted.
How, about three months? They're still up there now currently, yes, but there's three positions. They have total three positions open, we hired two.
All right. Mr. Fassi?
Yeah, Mr. Pilot, when you, when you go in and inspect a multiple, you can go in the public area without, I guess you go with the manager, you say, if we're in the city of the south, you can go inspect anything that's in the public duty council.
anything that's in the public duty council." You know, you can walk in, out, the basement, check the furnace, check the boilers?
Yes, currently, we could.
Without these ordinance.
Currently, we could, if you don't require.
And you can make them, if they're dangerous to the people living there, number one, you go to the health department, and they can make their move. They do the rest of that all the time. And inspecting whether or not, giving the guy so many days to get the boilers in or get the water fixed, you don't have groundwater. But, I mean, those are the things you can do right now. You have to keep a building that is landlord-to-people, you gotta keep it safe, number one, you keep it healthy, and you gotta keep it imposed right now.
Correct.
And what I, I guess what I'm saying is, that, that right now, you know, we had a former council lady, you know, that had rats, complaining about rats, garbage, people down in the laundry room, water down there leaking, and she ended up moving. All right? And so, you know, we, as public officials, we should've been able to go in there, check the public areas, and close the place down to throw the people out. Ask them to, you have to find another place to live, it's unhealthy. I mean, it's, you can't, you can't, you can't go ahead and go in these rooms unless you get permission. But the public writes away and keeping them healthy and safe. We have that right today. We have that right. You get a complaint, you can go in that building and check anything you want, the laundry is in the public area. And all I am trying to say is, I, and not even coming to that comments, but all I'm trying to say is that, is that we've got so much stuff on our table to get done, and so much money on the table to get done, and I didn't mention Northland, you know? And I'm saying is that, you know, if you're gonna get into this, you know, it's gotta be right. It's just gotta be right. All the, all the things that we have, the options should be on here. There's nothing wrong with the ordinance. It's just that we, as an organization, have to take care of things that we can take care of. And I mentioned someone already, you know? I mean, and I'm very concerned about the finances of the city.
We've discussed this, and that on that last item, that brought before in the past. We have staff here that are good individuals, they are experts in what they're doing, we have a city administrator, and we postpone them to get to run the city on a day-to-day I'm a strong believer in performance reviews. This was on, and everybody else that reports to council aware that we will be having performance reviews. We was changing the form and everything, we'll give a very in-depth performance review process. So, anything that falls through that, council will have an opportunity to look at that and vote on the performance of the individuals that directly report to council. So, that's just a fact, that's not the, anybody who ever worked in corporate America, you get performance, you get reviewed, that's part of the process of work and in your paycheck. So, I feel comfortable with what staff is doing for us, and I feel comfortable that we have a very adequate staff. They have identified the potential problems, they have identified how they're gonna work through those particular problems. So, I think we've continued this discussion, I think this is, we'll move on to reconsider.
The responsibility is to the council. Under the charter, the council is responsible. Not the administrator, not the, not anybody, the city council. And we're responsible for making sure the city is run right, and that we don't get into financial trouble. And that's what I'm laying on the table.
Right. That's what this is about. Council's given him authority to do this, and if he, and they told they can do it, we got guidance from them. We didn't just jump out of the sky and say, "Do this." We got input from Mark, Ed, and from the city administrator. So, this is a well-thought-out process, and this is, I think, is a voice for the tenants, and it says something about this, what this council and the city of Southfield. So, if there's no other comments on this, this will move on to the consensus agenda. Thank you.
All right, we will recess this meeting now for, hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Cruz, just one quick thing, we're at some, not even. We didn't have any more updates on sixty minutes.
Yes. The main event is planned for April twenty-ninth, and there are a number of other events that are planned. I left up on the cap here, the full, I had Michael Manning, Community Relations, for care of it. I left you on the cap here. A lot of it is grabbed, but it details the event. There's even, I don't know, Miss Field, would you like to comment on the other couple things you're working on for the April twenty-ninth event?
Sure. We're supporting the city's plans for the celebration that day, first celebration of the table, and we're looking at providing the hazard on the front lawn in the afternoon. More details to come on that. I know that, like, relations and working, having some activities for kids, we're gonna host mostly the activities for kids on the front lawn, but I know they're doing the passport program inside, and that's seeing all our city services and talking to some vendors. We didn't want that to be the quiet zone, though, and everybody outside for fun was. It'll be fun on both ends, so we'll bring some character artists inside. It just won't, we won't have a lot of music in the pavilion area. So, I know that he's looking at providing some activities where we're gonna get a stage, a larger stage from Open Comedy that day. We booked a climbing tower for the kids that day. So, there's a, there's a number of the activities that all the city services are coming together to provide.
So, is it not, still, it's not gonna be just centered on that weekend? It's just not centered on that weekend only?
There's that weekend, but then there are other events that we will have, there will be part of the sixtieth year anniversary, Summer Solstice, some of those other events, part of the Code Ramen, we'll be in recognition of the sixth year anniversary. Or even, I don't wanna make any commitment, but we're even, it's a discussion with the chamber in their annual awards dinner, they're trying to tie events together. And we're working on that. Obviously, that won't be in April, that event typically happens November, December, and kind of in recognition of that. So, I know there were two conversations regarding that type of event. I know there was some discussion at this table regarding black tie, we haven't gotten to that level, okay? But we were hoping if we could dovetail with another event and not have, or something where the economics make sense, that's okay. We have a joint resolution that I need to collect signatures on for the next meeting. Okay. With that, this meeting will recess, and we'll reconvene in the chamber.
The United States of America, included Republicans, Christians, one nation, under God, universal, liberty to all, justice for all.
We'll stop this meeting on the presentations. Education and Sharing Day USA, Dr. Mayor.
Good evening, council. I have a joint resolution between the, from the council and the mayor, declaring Tuesday, March twenty-seventh, that's tomorrow, shall be Education and Sharing Day USA. I'd like to ask Rabbi Mendelstein to come forward, anyone else? Thank you, Rabbi. This is, again, a joint resolution between the mayor of the city of Southfield and the city council, resolving that whereas March twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, will be marked as Education and Sharing Day USA by the United States Congress and the President of the United States as a national event since nineteen seventy-eight, in recognition of the monumental achievements of Rebbe Rabbi Menachem Schneerson. And whereas, for the betterment of education for all Americans, as a day to raise awareness and strengthen the education of our children. And whereas, on the day marking the Rebbe's birth, urging all U.S. citizens to learn from the lessons taught by the Rebbe, and devote more energy and education to education. And whereas, Education and Sharing Day USA provides an excellent opportunity for the city of Southfield to demonstrate its dedication to the well-being and education of all children and adolescents of our city. And whereas, to recognize the importance of and to educate the public on the universal vision and teachings of this global spiritual leader, who dedicated his life to the betterment of mankind and was a tireless advocate for American youth. And now, therefore, be resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Southfield call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools, to commit to increasing the awareness of Education and Sharing Day USA. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor and council of the city of Southfield, County of the state of Michigan, do hereby declare March twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen, Southfield Education Sharing Day USA in the city of Southfield, Michigan, and signed by myself and each of the seven members of city council. I would note two things before I present this officially to Rabbi Mendelstein, is that in our city charter, or our city logo, we have education, commerce, and culture. So, I think it's very fitting that we're doing this. And also, in case the term Rebbe is not one you're familiar with, this is sort of a grand spiritual leader beyond, he was a rabbi, but he was more than that. And it wasn't just a Rabbi Menachem Schneerson. Tended to his congregation, he tended to Jews, and so Rabbi Mendelstein, I present this to you.
Thank you, Mayor Cyburnt and the city council. My name is Rabbi Mendelstein, I am a resident of Southfield and the development director for Blabach Shiva International School of Blabah Leadership in Oak Park. As the Jewish people prepare for the holiday of Passover commemorating the exodus from Egypt, I would like to touch upon an interesting phenomenon which we find when reading the biblical narrative of the story of Exodus. Just after leaving Egypt, Moses gathered their delights and spoke to them, none of the promised land or long walk ahead, but rather he spoke of the duty of parents to educate their children, and repeatedly spoke similar messages until his final days. Why the obsession with education? Because to defend a country, we need an army, a strong army, but to defend a civilization, we need good schools. The great leader and teacher, the Rebbe, Rabbi Menachem Schneerson, of righteous memory, taught that every individual, and in fact, every individual action, has an impact on the entire universe. The Rebbe emphasized the importance of education and good character, and instilled the hope for a brighter future into the lives of countless people in America and across the globe. Especially not with the most recent horrific events that shook us all to the core. When we are all looking for answers to combat that type of hateful behavior which we are seeing now, I think there is one thing that can resonate with us all, that which the Rebbe taught, that education in general should not be limited to the acquisition of knowledge and preparation for a career, rather, the educational system must pay more attention, indeed, the main attention, to building of character, with emphasis on the moral and ethical values that are bedrocked in society from the dawn of civilization, when they were known as the Seven Law laws. Tomorrow, Tuesday, March twenty-seventh, Americans will once again remark on Education and Sharing Day USA. This day was established by the United States Congress in nineteen seventy-nine, and signed by the president each year on the date corresponding to the Rebbe's Hebrew birthday, in tribute to his commitment to teaching the next generation of Americans the values that make our country strong. This day provides Americans the opportunity to pause and recognize our responsibility to ensure that our young people have the foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment. Today, by the mayor and city council recognizing this day as Education and Sharing Day in Southfield, it is a call to all citizens of this great city to reflect on the vital role of education in preparing our youth to be the leaders of tomorrow, with an emphasis on inspiring them of their moral and ethical obligation to serve a greater cause than self, and by the anchor of virtues, including courage and compassion. I would like to thank once again the mayor and the city council for their resolution to instill in the young minds and hearts of our children the empowering message that one act of goodness and kindness can tip the scale to usher in the era of world peace. May our city serve as a beacon of light for all people of all walks of life. May Southfield help achieve the goal so gloriously stated in our Pledge of Allegiance, so that America is truly one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice to all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to come around? Chair, if you'd be coming. I'd just like to shake a hand. Or? Right. We have no appointments tonight, we have minutes.
Mr. President? I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and the committee of the whole meeting minutes of March fifth, two thousand and eighteen. If there's a discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
What is the motion on that?
Mr. Frazier make a motion, and Mr. Taylor second the motion, for the approval of the minutes. This was an inspection.
Mr. President, the reasoning for the approval of this is council acts five ordinances and resolutions, so this should be put in our permanent record, and the only way it's put in the permanent record is if you add them.
All right, we are. So, now, the clerk, we.
Do you think a motion, support and a motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to approve of the joint resolution for Education and Sharing Day USA.
Move, Mr. Cruz, support on this, Morris, that we approve Education and Sharing Day USA as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the minutes will be approved, and also the resolution. Just because of editorial, that is why we will be having the rule of order class being third, where we will give you to these details of that our new clerk will bring to our light. With respect to that, we move on to the agenda items. And I'll try to go over the audience, our listening audience, TV audience, we'll just follow along by going to the clerk site, and we're going to the agenda for the city council. Because sometimes, these particular synergy items are very detailed, and I want to just get some high points in the physical impact. So, for your edification, if you need a little more detail, please for that. The synergy item, A, is the establishment of Pilot Neighborhood Enterprise Corporation. And both the two thousand
So for your edification, if you need a little more detail, please for that. The agenda item A is the establishment of Pilot Neighborhood Enterprise Zone program. At both the 2012-2016 Neighborhood Services Committee meeting and the February 22, 2015 regular council meeting, conducted as a committee of the whole, the administration outlined a program for the implementation of a neighborhood enterprise zone program within the city of Southfield. The fiscal impact of this particular enterprise zone will be, the purpose of the implementation of the whole enterprise zone program is to preserve, enhance, and increase the property value of eligible out units within the zone. The city will incur administrative costs associated with the program. The administration will develop an application fee to mitigate costs associated with the administration of the program. And also with this particular item, we will be establishing a public hearing day of May 21, 2018. Item number two, item B, approval agreement for the rehabilitation of northbound Northwestern Highway Service Drive from Southfield Road to Lhasa Road. The Michigan Department of Transportation has presented a contract document for the rehabilitation of the northbound Northwestern Highway Service Drive from Southfield Road to Lhasa Road. The fiscal impact of this will be the estimated construction cost is $6,630,000. And Southfield portion of that will be $5,838,833, $5,538,836,25. Funding for the city share of the project is provided from the road fund construction fund account. We will be given an additional $50,000 contribution from the city senate advisory board. Consent agenda item numbers C, proposed sale of real property. The city-owned parcel is a vacant residential condo lot located on the east side of Bullish Way, two parts of south of Ten Mile Road. Mr. Wright has offered to purchase the parcel for $39,694. He intends to build his home on this parcel. The fiscal impact, in addition to the proceeds from the sale, selling the reference parcel would relieve the city of possible promises, possible premise liabilities, and maintenance costs. Selling the lot would also put the property back on the tax rolls. Consent agenda item D, renewal of AT&amp;T Centrex line. On October 16, 2017, town council approved the contract of AT&amp;T for both long-distance and Centrex home services. Since that meeting, the long-distance contract has been signed and implemented, but the Centrex contract has not been signed. The city attorney office were brought into this to force a movement. AT&amp;T was refusing to include either the number of lines agreed to or the actual cost per land in terms of the contract. On 3/16/2018, the city received two Centrex service contracts from AT&amp;T. The new contracts include an addendum to the contract specifying the number of lines contracted for and the cost of the land. The fiscal impact, the new contract yearly cost is $1,554 more than previously approved. The city can't counsel that 90% of the contracted lands were without company. We receive from staff that this is a favorable contract to move forward. Consent agenda item E, Lawrence Tech University Greek Day, request for a front lawn. The Lawrence Technological University has an annual Greek Day event and is requesting the use of a municipal complex front lawn on Saturday, April 14, 2018, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Activities will include races, tug-of-war, balloon tosses, et cetera. The use of alcohol is not permitted to an event, and campus security will be on site. Consent agenda item F, is the scheduling of a public hearing for a single-line assessment roll. Background, section 1.3 of the Single Line Assessment is contained in the ordinance code mandates the procedure for assessing certain costs incurred by the city through the assessment process. The cost which was assessed but not paid becomes a ruin on the land and then placed on the taxpayer by a single-line assessment. The recommendation received from the staff, well, it is recommended that this honorable body schedule a hearing for the regular meeting, April 26, 2018, for the purposes of confirming a single-line special assessment roll in accordance with Charter 1, Section 1.13 of the City Code of the Ordinance.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. President?
I'd like to move that we approve consent agenda items D through F.
Support? Move that Mr. Frazier supports on this, passing that we approve consent agenda items D through F. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Consent agenda item B through F are approved. We will now go into public hearing. Res zoning request of Dorchen Mark Associates.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council, Mayor Cyper. The first item on your agenda is PZR 18-0001. This is a resoning request of Dorchen Mark Associates for rezoning the property on 27,000 Telegraph Road. Tied to that as well is the second item of the public hearing is PSLU 18-0001, and then under the site plans PSP 18-0002. Do you want me to take those individually? Do you want me to present them all at once?
Take them individually.
Individually? Okay, thank you. Okay, so for the first item, again, PZR 18-0001, and I will turn off the floodlights here to make it a little bit easier to see. So this piece of property, again, 27,000 Telegraph Road, we're just north of the I-696 Northwestern Highway Freeway, so between Northwestern Highway and 12 Lotte Road. The property itself was an old Toys R Us store. Regional, from a future land use standpoint, the property itself, we're looking at regional mixed use from the standpoint of the master plan and future land use. Property has dual zoning on it right now, has a portion of RS, regional shopping, as well as a small sliver B3 general business. What the petitioner is seeking this evening is to rezone that small sliver B3, 1.71 acres of land, to RS, regional shopping. Basically what it's doing is it's cleaning up the property. Instead of having dual zoning on it, we are just looking at a single zoning on the property instead of the dual zoning. So that is what the petitioner is asking for this evening from the standpoint of the rezoning request.
You want to speak, Mr. Dorchen?
My name is Sam Dorchen, Dorchen Mark Associates, 2989. Greenfield, in Southfield. There it is. The purpose of the rezoning request is clearly stated by the planners, to consolidate the zoning in that area and to get rid of a small, isolated, zoned parcel.
Okay, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. Clearly state your name and address.
I see a sign right here that says what I'm supposed to do. Pamela Jarrow, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 4037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'm totally in support of PZR 18-0001. I don't think any part of the city of Southfield should have dual zoning, because you will always have a problem with the aspect of the RS zoning versus the small part, 0.71 acres that would be considered B3. I think that area needs a lot of TLC. I can remember back in the day when Chatham's grocery store was there and Toys R Us was really booming. When it was announced that Toys R Us was going out of business, my husband and I said that it would be a great thing if Mr. Glassman, meaning the son, Mr. Glassman, and also the father, if they would consider getting that property. And then the next time we looked and saw it, they had cars on the lot, and we thought, maybe they're going to do it. So it was quite refreshing to have the younger Mr. Glassman to come to the city of Southfield and state his interest in concerns about the zoning and also redeveloping that area. Now, I'd like to ask council a question, and you probably won't answer it now, but for your consideration. That is the same area or strip on Northwestern Highway where the former New Soul Gardens is rebuilding their facility. Did we declare that a district where a new development would be considered for brownfield or for tax evasion? And if so, are you going to offer that to a business owner that's been in the city at least for 35 years, that I have with the city of Southfield? And I'm sure it's been longer than that. So that's pretty much all I have to say, and if anyone wants to be so inclined to address the issue of that being the tax evasion or brownfield redevelopment area, I would greatly appreciate it, and I'll yield 35 seconds. Thank you.
Public hearing is still open. Anyone else wishes to address the question? Seeing that the public hearing is closed, council, we have no discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move PZR 18-0001, the rezoning request of Dorchen Mark Associates.
Support? The move that Mr. Frazier supports on this, that we approved, PZR 18-0001. Is all in favor? That Mr. Frazier has a question?
The drawing in our package and the drawing up there are different. It shows, in our package, it shows the rezoning coming down to a point, followed by, up there it's blocked it off. Which of the two is accurate?
Because I don't quite understand.
The bottom end of it.
Yep, so this is the, that's the B3 portion right there.
Pardon me?
That little pie-shaped portion of B3, that's what's being proposed for rezoning.
Yeah. But in our drawing, did you see it in our drawing?
Sure.
It comes down to a point.
Is that a picture? It's just a...
Yeah, I mean, I made you the chair, yeah. It's an image. It's not necessarily accurate to between the two drawings. Two drawings are not the same. However, this 0.71 acres has shown the plans that we have that were part of the drawings.
Okay. All right. It was moved in a second, and council, you ready to vote? All in favor of approval of PZR 18-0001? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? This item is approved. PZR 18-0001. Could we move to...
Mr. President, for this part, we need to introduce the ordinance.
Earnest number? Here we go, earnest number?
1660.
1660?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
I move that we introduce earnest number 1660.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Earnest number 1660 is in the introduction. Now we move on to PSLU 18-0001, special use request.
Yes, thank you. So this is for the same property, 27,000 Telegraph Road. With the rezoning request, what the petitioner is now asking for in the special use portion would be to allow the use of the property for a used car, new car dealership, and storage on that particular property itself. We believe in going through the process that it is in harmony with the appropriate development of the regional shopping district, that it's in accordance with the purpose of the chapter, and that it's the proper character to blend in with the existing developments sitting around it.
Mr. Dorchen, you want to address this one also?
Again, I'm Sam Dorchen, Dorchen Mark Associates, 2989, Greenfield and Southfield. And again, this request is to make consistent all the uses that exist just to the north. The Glassman property is three or four different automotive brands. This one, this particular structure and property will be consistent with that. And in addition, just to the north of the Glassman property is another automotive brand, Southfield Chrysler Jeep. And this will make, this special use will allow this to be used consistently with the remaining property.
This is a public hearing, and the public hearing is open.
Pamela Jarrow, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Once again, I am in total support of the special use request for Glassman, the Glassman group, which is PSLU 18-0001. Just for clarification on the previous public hearing, you're going to go from RS to make the entire area B3. Oh, I'm sorry. Clarification. I needed that. So instead of having a B3 and an RS, it's now going to be RS.
Regional shopping?
Okay. Thank you, because I definitely needed that clarification. Once again, Glassman, the Glassman audit group has been around for a lot of years. I really like the idea and the concept to introduce new car sales to another building and have car storage. I think it would be great to that area, and maybe with the new development, and we do all of these neighborhood rakes, that maybe we can get some neighborhood rake and clean them right in that area. Because from the Telegraph corridor, right to where Northwestern Highway connects, going around where Glassman is, where Toys R Us used to be, in Soul Gardens, it's a lot of trash there. And it's also up the street from where Plant Moran is, which does your audits. So we really need some community rake and TLC in that area, but I think this request for special use should be approved, and I'm going to congratulate the Glassman group for what they're doing with that area. Thank you, and I'm yielding a minute and two seconds.
Public hearing is still open. Do we have anyone else wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing that the public hearing is closed, council, discussion?
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing, and the public hearing is open.
Pamela Darrow, PO Box 155, Southville, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Once again, I am in total support of the special use request for Glassman, the Glassman group, which is PSLU eighteen dash zero 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 one. Just for clarification on the previous public hearing, you're gonna go from RS to make the entire area B3. Oh, I'm sorry. Clarification. I needed that. So instead of having a B3 and an RS, it's now gonna be RS.
Regional shopping?
Okay. Thank you, because I definitely needed that clarification. Once again, Glassman, the Glassman Audit Group has been around for a lot of years. I really like the idea and the concept to introduce new car sales to another building and have car storage. I think it would be great to that area, and maybe with the new development, and we do all of these neighborhood rakes, that maybe we can get some neighborhood rake and clean them right in that area. Because from the Telegraph corridor, right to where Northwestern Highway connects, going around where Glassman is, where Torrey's RS used to be, in Soul Gardens, it's a lot of trash there. And it's also up the street from where Plant Moran is, which does your audits. So we really need some community rake and TLC in that area. But I think this request for special use should be approved. And I'm gonna congratulate the Glassman group for what they're doing with that area. Thank you. And I'm yielding a minute and two seconds.
Public hearing is still open. Do we have anyone else wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing that the public hearing is closed. Council, discussion? Any questions?
Yes, sir. In the, in the write-up, and when Mr. Glassman was here originally, he had said that he was trying to secure a new car dealership, and he was using this as a sort of temporary holding thing, because he didn't want to put a lot of money into the building until he found out one way or the other. And in the write-up, it says that if the new dealership has not been approved for this location, or if the building has not been substantially improved architecturally within eighteen months, this approval, of this approval, the petitioner is to return to the City Council for a re-review of the special use request. Is that moved?
Yes.
Okay. And what would happen at that time?
After the eighteen months?
Yes.
We would, well, the council would then re-review the special land use portion of this project, to see whether or not you want to continue the special land use that you're bringing. And the major concern is, the building as it stands right now, and wanting to see an improvement to that building through the planning commission and through staff, and also through the council meeting, there are concerns with this existing building and outlooks. And I think the concern is that it would look this way for a long period of time, never really did transform into a better looking building on the top of the road there. But the reason for coming back before the City Council, to get, again, review the special land use, to see if you wanted to continue to operate as it is right now, or if you seek significant changes to it.
Okay, if I recall, the drawings that he presented the last time, he did put a fair amount of money into it to bring it up to looking much better than it does right now.
Yes, through hand job, yes.
Yeah, and sign agents got it.
Right, yes.
Now, if it comes back in eighteen months, then I hope he gets his new dealership and everything.
As we do too.
Yes. Would it come, all right, would it come through the planning commission again?
It would come to council, not directly.
Directly to council? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, move that we approve PSLU 18-001.
Support? It was moved by Mr. Morris, supported by Mr. Taylor, that we approve special use request, PSLU eighteen dash zero zero one. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It's approved. PSU special, PSLU eighteen dash zero zero one, special use request is approved.
Do you have any comments?
No, no. Okay, we will now move into site plan.
If you'd like me to, then I could present the site plan on this particular project as well?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, all right. So the site plan portion is PSP eighteen dash zero zero two. Again, with the rezoning and now allowing for the special land use to use the property for new and used vehicle sales, the petitioner has submitted to the planning department the site plan. It was evaluated to make sure that it met the requirements for bike racks, typical things we already have, pedestrian connections as well. It also, the site plan also shows locations of stone fort, the vault, or whatever they have on the site as well. So the property owner, again, is looking to upgrade the property. There were conversations that were had in regard to existing pavement on the property itself, looking to upgrade it as well. And the petitioner had noted, they will look at, repair has needed on the pavement, right there.
Does she want to say anything, Mr. Dorchen, or did the plan have covered sufficiently?
Well, a lot, a lot of the discussion that has preceded this has covered quite a bit of the information that's important. In addition to the, what is apparently considered minor improvements to the building, there will be quite a bit of money spent, not only for the purchase of the property and to make it consistent with the uses in the area, but also it, as was mentioned, Mr. Glassman who's here tonight, has, has been searching for a new brand which would obviously require changes to the building, substantial changes to the building. Mr. Glassman needs an area for used car sales. Luckily proposed will make it usable, quite usable for that at this time. He owns another property in Southfield, Collision Shop, and possible relocation for used car sales is available down on Telegraph Road. One of the, one of the things that was mentioned at the last meeting, I think at the beginning of the month, was the fact that from some, to some people's opinion, the building looked like a warehouse from, from the Telegraph Road and Expressway, the M5 and Expressway. After reading the meeting last few weeks ago, I drove on that Expressway, M5, and took a look, and it is a very blank white wall that faces the Expressway. And one of the things that struck me is the proliferation of wall murals in Detroit and other areas in this, this part of the state, and in other cities, and large cities in the U.S. And I approached Mr. Glassman with the possibility that a wall mural would add quite a bit to the area, and on a temporary basis, not as, not necessarily as a permanent thing. And he agreed that it would be something he'd be very interested in. I also asked the planning department and the art commission people, and they were all interested in that. I've done a little looking into the possibilities which seem to be endless, it depends on the imagination that somebody has. The only thing we're cautious about is that we should run it past the city that the sign inspector to make sure it doesn't qualify as signage. We are working on that as a possibility. So with that, if I can answer any more questions, I'm here.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm very in favor of the mural idea, and you brought that to me some time ago. There was some discussion on whether Mr. Glassman would be interested in having the murals on panels so that they could be saved, or just applied to the nation or the ball?
I think it gets to be kind of a major situation to think of a wall that's 138 feet long and 24 feet high, to try to save it as a backwood that could be used somewhere else. Just, I would think the cost of doing that compared to some of the estimates that I've received from artists, is that it would be more cost-effective and perhaps more attuned to creativity, if some people consider this temporary and have, if you have another place for something that's 138 feet long and 24 feet high, that it could be repaired.
Well, it also could be multiple different murals on one wall, possibly. But, no, I find this very encouraging, and the fact that he is willing to entertain this sure beats a just plain wall. And again, with something, especially with the new development going on around the corner, that it's picking up the area.
Okay, Mr. Dorchen, I know we did discuss the rule, and so the plan, I think he had the concept of that, that we ought to. Okay, can I give a motion? Mr. President, I move approval of PSP 18-0002.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Mr. Morris, that we approve site plan PSP eighteen dash zero zero two. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Guys have it. PSP eighteen dash zero zero two, this approved.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just want to congratulate Mr. Glassman, I see some of the audience. And also, it happens to be that I purchased my first car from your dealership. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll get back on track. Site plan number PSP eighteen dash zero 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 one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the next item on your agenda is PSP eighteen dash zero 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 one. This is the site plan review request, here at the restaurant at 25,000 Southfield Road. Property is on the, what would be the northeast corner of the 10 Mile Road and Southfield. If you recall, this particular location underwent a significant change in facade over the last couple of years, for a more unified look across the part of Southfield Road. What the petitioner is looking to do is occupy the basement of this particular location with Paradise Lounge. Paradise Lounge wasn't this location once before. I believe petitioner noted that for about 25 years it was in that location. So what he would like to do is reopen Paradise Lounge in the basement of this location, 10,000 square foot named Club Restaurant. One of the reasons it's coming before the council is because there's a waiver of parking required. 226 spaces are required, and there's 195 spaces on the site, so there would be a waiver for zoning board appeals that would be required moving forward. In addition, one of the questions that came out of the council meeting had to do with fire suppression. Fire department was actually in this building a couple of years ago. Basement is actually the only area in the building that does have fire suppression in it. Within your package is an email that I got from Angel Ball, who was with fire prevention. And what he had noted was that the entire fire protection system, as well as the fire sprinklers and kitchen goods, pressure system, would need to be over read acceptance test, as well as testing the dialers, and that's what the fire department requires. And then another item that came from the council meeting was regarding the exterior parking lot lighting. And what the staff has put in the condition is that, should additional lighting be required, that the petitioner or owner will provide that lighting in the portion of the parking lot.
Sir, can you repeat the last one about the lighting?
Sure, yeah, regarding the lighting, there was a concern about lack of lighting on the east side of the parking lot. So the evaluation of the lighting needs to be made, if additional lighting is required against all.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Moises Promutis. I'm the attorney for the petitioner here, and he's standing to my left, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
My name is Mike Yu Komando. I live on 23960 Rocky Hill Street, Southfield, and I'm here to answer your questions and address your concerns.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, provided this is, if this is approved, what are you expecting in the way of entertainment, and what are your planned hours of operation?
We intend, the petition that we have, we intend to open at noon, and close at 2:00.
I'm asking about entertainment and hours of great moments you close at night for us. I couldn't hear, I thought you said...
Okay. We will open at noon, 12:00 P.M., and then we will close at 2:00 A.M.
Okay.
And we have...
And entertainment, disc jockey, dancing?
We have entertainment, and the majority of our business will be fulfilled by 80%. And we do have entertainment, especially on Sundays when we have one of those full hours at night.
Okay.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes, I have a concern myself, that is, I think it's our challenge here as council people to make sure that only our businesses in the city of Southfield, that we cast the light in that and make sure that everyone is welcome. And I have a hard time figuring out how you're gonna handicap people to the basement and get them back out again.
He's installed an elevator already.
I didn't see an elevator in the plans here, right?
It's there.
Is there?
If I didn't hear, the elevator is directly adjacent to, there's a, oops, I'm sorry, is directly adjacent to a, there's a stairway that goes down off of the east side of the building, and the elevator is right adjacent to that stairway.
Just recently installed.
Just recently installed, okay.
Yes, it's been in anticipation of this use.
Okay, then I changed my mind, which I guess I can do that too. So, go ahead.
What is the capacity of the elevator from the handicap standpoint, wheelchair standpoint?
It's a single...
Single wheelchair?
Yes.
One other thing, with respect to light pollution, if lights are installed on the east side, will that, I understand there's some housing, residential water there, so will those lights be appropriately adjusted not to...
Sure.
...hit with the residents?
I think that's part of the proposal that the planner wants on the east side of the lot to address that lighting, so I think that will be one of the items that we would take out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jeff mentioned the fire suppression system has to, is installed, but it has to be rechecked by a fire marshal or a fire team. And then entrances and exits into the, into the basement, so there's one entrance that can, one entrance that's like a wider staircase, but there's a total of four exits, stairwells that people can leave out in case of emergency. So one entrance actually is open.
All of them are gonna be open?
Well, I'm saying for an entrance, you only have that one entrance, but the...
Emergency exits will use that.
Emergency exit, okay. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Pacassi?
I move PSP eighteen dash zero 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 one, the site plan review request of Paradise Lounge Restaurant.
Support. It was moved by Mr. Pacassi and supported by Mr. Fraser, that we approve PSP eighteen dash zero 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 one. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Site plan PSP eighteen dash zero 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 one, this is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add that the site plan committee, we were concerned with Mr. Fraser was concerned about, so there are two exits to the west, and then the big wide stairway to the east, and then the elevator. So we were concerned about people getting down there, not using the...
All right, we will move on to, that's it, you have your...
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck, and I'm glad you, I'm glad you have the elevator there, because you're my neighbor.
I had mine.
All right, we will now have communications. Mr. Gerard Mulligan?
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mulligan, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee. Post Office Black one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four zero three seven. Last week I talked about the three Southfield Civil Service Commissioners and how this city looked the other way by allowing these commissioners to serve on other boards and commissions in this city in violation of section six point five of the city charter. This issue was oversimplified by me last week. It's really far more complicated because six point five is being selectively enforced by this city. In other words, a double standard. Let me expand on this. I will begin by reading all of the charter prohibitions that are placed on the civil service commissioners. And I quote from section six point five, quote, "No member of the commission shall hold any other elective or elective office of the city nor be employed by the city in any capacity or be an officer or a member of a committee of any partisan political club or organization or be a candidate for elective office," unquote. What I wish to draw from this quote is two things. First, a member of the civil service commission can serve on any other board nor commission, which I touched on last week. And secondly, per can a commissioner be a candidate for any elective office? Both prohibitions are contained within the same sentence. This is important to note as I move forward. Last week in nineteen seventy, last year in twenty seventeen, Coretta Cole ran for Southfield City Council. And she was told by this city that she needed to step down from being a civil service commissioner per section six point five, and Coretta complied. But ten years earlier, in two thousand and seven, no one asked Coretta to step down from the civil service commission nor having ten, an empty theater when she was currently on the SIRS board in violation of section six point five. Again, please note, both prohibitions are listed within the same sentence in section six point five. But why one prohibition is in place and not the other? Why?
Thank you.
Mr. Pamela Gerald.
Thank you for putting my name correct. Pamela Gerald, residents, I am honored and humbled to know that after all these years, I still have your trust, confidence, and support. One of my many Southfield angels told me that my blessings come from the north and not the south. I remember, no weapons formed against me shall prosper, and every tongue that rises up against me in judgment shall be condemned. Residents, go to YouTube and watch the Martha Fit Southfield C O W meeting. Cue it to the counter timer, one hour thirty-seven minutes and thirty-one seconds. To listen to Dan Wrightwell's commentary. Specifically at one hour thirty-eight, one hour thirty-eight seconds on the counter timer. Dan Wrightwell says he never wants to see a hundred people come into this room uninvited and telling us what we can do for them. Dan Wrightwell, you owe some of the Sapphire apartment residents, which are voters, an apology. And voters, Dan Wrightwell is up for reelection in twenty nineteen. The Open Meetings Act of nineteen seventy-six indicates that public hearings like this council meeting can be attended by any member of the public. Residents don't need an invitation from you, your colleagues, nor any other members of this administration. The ability to attend these meetings are a public right guaranteed by the state of Michigan. Dan, these council meetings have become a farcical sight to see, meeting after meeting. You have been on council for two years and obviously you have not been paying attention to how council meetings are conducted. I hope that you will benefit from those parliamentarian slash Robert Rules of Order training meetings that have been scheduled for all of the members of council. Thank God for qualified city clerk that will obviously be keeping this city on its toes. Dan, with your obsequious nature towards Mayor Ken Seiger, I am left with no choice but to say, I have no confidence in your ability to provide leadership or preside over this council during these meetings. So this year in November, you guys will vote for a new council president. Consider these combinations, Michael Mandelbaum and Lloyd Cruz, Lenny Taylor and Michael Mandelbaum, Lloyd Cruz and Lenny Taylor. Those would just be my recommendations. And for the record, anything that you do as it relates to Sapphire or apartment inspections in your efforts to be transparent, because all of you said that you wanted to be transparent, put those inspections on the city's website. So there are some Sapphire apartment people here, if you've got the courage and conviction for what you said. Won't you give them, give them an apology or explain what you meant? Time is up.
Thank you. We now have Mrs. Brenda Smith.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Smith. I live at one six five zero zero North Park Drive. I'm here this evening to ask your support for the newly written building inspection ordinance. Two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and two thousand eighteen have been devastating years for many tenants living in rental apartment properties in the city of Southfield. These years without hot water, heat, elevators, busting pipes, and floods culminated in a mandatory evaluation of tenants on January fifth, two thousand eighteen. Because several tenants have addressed the situation to city council on several occasions, each of you is very familiar with our troubles. Several years ago, a similar building inspection ordinance was put before your honorable body for approval. Unfortunately, that ordinance was not approved. We do not want this ordinance before you today to fail, however. Apartment living has declined significantly in many apartment buildings and complexes here. Many tenants are living in shameful, unsafe, and uninhabitable car apartments, even as they pay rents that exceed market rate value. This past weekend, our young people took to the streets to save their lives from gun violence, essentially because our Congress refuses to write and enact legislation that will protect them. Here too, in the city of Southfield, there has been an outcry from tenants and families and various TV outlets demanding that tenants' problems be addressed. At this point, only your honorable body, excuse me, your honorable body, can pass the kind of legislation that can fix or at the very least reduce the problem. There is no other government body that can write legislation that empowers building safety and engineering, expanding entry to apartments in Southfield and the ability to issue violations if needed.
Mr. Smith, thank you.
Okay, I'm just here to implore you to approve the ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Communications is closed, only individuals who have requested recognition. Let me just briefly, with respect to Robert Rules of Order, I requested those, that session, and asked our clerk to arrange for that session. So this is a needed item, so it's nothing. And with respect to the comment this year, when I mentioned, I didn't speak there, I indicated what I should have said. I didn't want individuals coming here with files unexpected. We didn't have no, we did not know what this was all about. A hundred people just came to the room, everybody's trying to figure out what was this about. So with respect to ordinances that are being passed, and any, because the council, we want to be aware of what's coming down the pipe so we can respond accordingly that particular day. But obviously, all of us here, and our attorney sits here, we are familiar with Open Meeting Act, and that's why we are, we are, we are out. We follow open meetings law, that's in the letter. With respect to that, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. I was at the Sapphire on Friday with the inspections in. We do hear you. The city of Southfield is working very diligently. Our inspectors were out, they come out on a regular basis, and thank you for welcoming us into your units. You did allow us in, we did work with your complaints, and we are, we made our list, and we are working on those. And I was given a letter tonight that I know that each of the residents received from management that you will now have your unit inspected. And they said that they're doing that on Thursday and Friday of this week. So from us being diligent in what we're doing, they are also taking on more responsibilities as your management. So we will stay involved, continue to let us know how things are going. And again, thank you very much for coming tonight and speaking out, but also for allowing us into your units because that helped us a lot. So I wanted to say thank you for that. I also want to mention that on Sunday, you would mark your calendar, Sunday, April twenty-ninth, that the Social Justice Ministry of Department Church will have a voter education forum. It's free to the public, it will be at one o'clock at the Shriner Silver Garden. It's just for voter education. That's what it's all about, so the name of it is to know before you go. It's going to talk to you about everything that's going to be on the ballot. And lastly, I'd like to say that as we're closing out the month of March, March is National Women's History Month. In nineteen eighty-seven, the US Congress designated March as the National Women's History Month. This created a special opportunity in our schools, our workplaces, our communities to recognize the ongoing persistence of our mothers, our grandmothers, our aunts, sisters, neighbors, and friends. And we should celebrate their achievements all this month and throughout the year. I cannot name all the women pioneers that the city of Southfield has. But I do ask that as you walk the halls of city, of the city hall out there, that you take a look at those pictures and remember, remember all the women that paved the way for us today. People such as Barbara Tally, who was the first African-American councilwoman. Our current, our past mayor and current councilwoman Brenda Lawrence. Our current city clerk, Sharika Hawkins. Tanya Morris, our councilwoman. We have commissioners Nancy Horos and Janet Jacksons, just to name a few. Women are a very important part of our history here in Southfield. So as we celebrate our sixtieth anniversary of the city next month on the twenty-eighth, I hope we recognize and celebrate some of the women who have helped Southfield to be the great city that it is today. And in pardon, I like to say, women strong. Thank you.
Mr. Martin Paul.
Yes, I wanted to remind everyone that on Friday, April sixth, from two to six, at the Southfield Library, there will be two clinics that kind of go together. One is a free expungement clinic, and the other is a free entrepreneur legal workshop. Again, Friday, April sixth, from two to six P M. at the Southfield Library. You can contact our human services department if you have any questions. Also, starting next week, the first Monday in April, we'll have our leaf pickup starting again in the yard base. Just make sure that you comply with the city codes that are guidelines of how to dispose of those properties so they get picked up and they don't get missed. Thank you very much.
Mr. Frazier? Yes, this evening I have two items I'd like to speak to. First one is, this past week I attended Michigan Municipal League Legislative Conference in Lansing. And I thought that this is one of the better ones that, that Michigan Municipal League has put on. I attended several of the breakout sessions. And one of them spoke about OPEC and how other communities have been trying to meet their, their requirements for funding for OPEC. So I will share that with, with you, Mr. Administrator. There are several other ones, even only with one body, even only in one place at one time. They had one that was on, that was very well attended, I talked to several people who were there. And that was children in prison and, or youth in prison. And apparently they had some speakers that they had experienced that there were, the description was that there were, some of the audience were sitting there with their mouth open, they couldn't believe it. Others were very emotional about what the young people talked about, what they had to go through being in prison. So, but there are several other breakout sessions that were very good. The other thing that I'd like to bring to people's attention is that on the fourth of April, between two and three o'clock in the afternoon, there will be a bell-ringing event on the front steps of the city hall to commemorate the fiftieth anniversary of Martin Luther King Junior's assassination. He was assassinated on April fourth, two thousand nineteen sixty-eight. And our, the bell is out in the lobby, will be moved out on the, the front steps. So I'm asking everyone that's listening and watching, come to him, join in and, and help commemorate the event that unfortunately is still going on. That we haven't found a solution yet, but it looks like my generation and the millennial generation has kicked the can down the road. And it looks like the young people have picked up the can and said it's no longer going to be kicked down the road. We're going to do something about it, so my hat's off to them, and I support them all the way. Thank you. Mr. Focaccia?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to mention, young people who have made Southfield real good in the way of athletics. We had the Southfield ladies at Southfield A and T. They beat Farmington Hills Mercy Class Eight in basketball. They won the state show the district championship. And young ladies here before council the other day, and they have won state title in track and that brought recognition to the city. On Saturday, we had the young men from SDS. They fought up there at their president's center and they became state champions as well. So we have three groups that have really brought recognition to the city and all over the state of Michigan. So real proud of every one of them.
Not saying anyone else, we will now move to the mayor's portion.
On Saturday, I attended, along with a number of other Southfield people, the March for Our Lives demonstration, all of the Detroit Bigger. I think most people know that I am very much favored gun control. And as a former educator, I just find it important, the idea of arming teachers. And as a former educator, I just find it important, the idea of arming teachers in schools. And that seemed to be the same feeling of the people who attended the event on Saturday. I also wanted to give a report to the public in council tonight briefly. We continue on our mission of enhancing the city with public art. We have collected thousands of dollars for the Northland Art Fund. We have paid back the $500,000 loan that we took out to purchase that art. So we now have the second piece. We have won the Mayor and the Library. And we have the Soral Etra Untitled Piece. We're still searching to see if there was a title for that. But that has been placed in the South Garden in the front city hall. It looks great in that location. On this Friday, the crowd by Gio Pomodoro. The eight-foot-long, six-foot-high brass relief that piece has been rented by the town center and will be placed this Friday in the 2,000-pound lobby of the town center. And we also have the bids back for the restoration of the peacock that graced the peacock court at Marlin for many, many years. That we will be restoring that piece, and it will come back to council for confirmation on its location. The, we took multiple bids for the restoration. And of course, that restoration is along with the restoration of the crowd and the Soral Etra piece are all being paid for by donated funds. Those city tax dollars are expended on these restorations and installations. So I just wanted to give a brief update on where we're moving along. It's rather time-consuming, but we're making a slow but steady progress.
That's it. Okay, the administration. I have no, no interest in seeing the circuit. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, Mr. President, City Council. My name is Dawn Keane, I'm Assistant City Attorney from Southfield, City Attorney's Office. Here, Sue Waters away. On March 5th, the Committee of the Hall, it's my understanding, was a discussion for the proposed amendment to Chapter 105 of the City Code, which would require annual inspection of all multiple-family residential dwellings within the city, including all common areas, as well as inspection of not less than 20% of all dwelling units as manually selected by the building owner situated within a multiple-family residential dwelling. There was a consensus of City Council at the March 5th, 2018 Committee of the Hall meeting to proceed with introduction and enactment of this ordinance quarterly. City Attorney recommends that new council approve the resolution set below, which is the proposed ordinance, amendment, excuse me, amendment 3 in existing Chapter 105, registration of apartment communities, and adding, including, there are new Chapter 105, registration and inspection of multiple-family residential dwellings. Thank you.
Captain. Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Fray.
I move that we approve and introduce the ordinance of the proposed ordinance, amendment to the multiple-family inspections. Support.
Move by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Frazier, that we approve and introduce.
Mr. Chairman. Would like to make a comment. I am for this ordinance, and I want to make it very clear that I am. My concern is that today, we have the power to put our building department inspection in that, in the places where they're needed, to make sure that the people are safe and that they are protected, and they don't have a serious problems in the evenings. I think that they become very, very time-consuming. For example, the Sapphire facilities, I understand, today, we had 23 trips to the Sapphire apartments. And we're really talking about hiring, there were three individuals to go through probably 14,000 buildings, units, I'm sorry. So I'm very concerned whether or not we're ready to put together a team that can really do justice to everybody who has a need in these apartment complexes. The big thing that I am concerned about is I have a recent letter, and I'm sure council had received it, it's a form letter, but it's telling what an owner surcharged everybody all of a sudden for heat, water, and electricity, and TV, whatever it is. And I'm concerned about those people who can ill afford to pay for those extras now that are in these apartments. And I'm very concerned what's going to happen to those that can ill afford to pay these costs that are because these owners really are taking advantage of the situation. And I, so I want the city to get the control of it. I want them to have a team put together. I want them to have a plan. I want a organized plan. And I want them to go ahead and take care of their most need first, and make sure that all the 14,000 units in the city are taken care of. So I just wanted to make that clear, because I'm really concerned about not only the problems that people are having, but also what the surcharges are going to be placed upon it if we don't be careful. So that ends my comments. Mr. Chairman.
I think we move by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Frazier, that we approve the resolution. Proposed ordinance of multiple-family inspection. I'm in favor, Council. All in favor? Aye. Proposed. If approved, the ordinance. Sixteen, ordinance number 1661 is being entered. I move that we introduce ordinance number 1661. Move by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve, introduce ordinance number 1661. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That's it. We will move on to the next item, ordinance system.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1657.
Court. The move by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve. We enact ordinance number 1657. All in favor? Aye. That's it.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1658.
Court. Move by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve what we enact ordinance number 1658. All in favor? Aye. That's it.
I'd like to move that we enact ordinance number 1659.
So, court. Move by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we enact ordinance number 1659. All in favor? Aye. That's it. Do you also have, of ordinance 1660, do we want to enact that? We'd have to do that under an emergency. Okay. The order, this one that we just approved, 1661, do we approve this? No. No. Okay. It has to cook. Okay. We're just trying to eat dishes. Is there not any other items on the agenda? This means a yard. Thank you.